Good afternoon. I'm gonna go ahead and start our, well, good morning, start our 11:30 work session. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate everyone coming for our 11:30 work session. First item is the Community Climate Action Plan update and greenhouse gas goal options. You may recall this is one of the topics that is coming from the council retreat as a part of your strategic planning process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Megan Anderson with our Office of Sustainability to go through the presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. And the mayor is excusing Councilman Thompson will be running late.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. Good to see everybody here today to talk to you a little bit more about the Community Climate Action Plan. As you'll remember, at the city council retreat, you requested a little bit more information around setting a goal, including costs and potential impacts, and some information on what we're already doing. So, the agenda for today, we're gonna talk a little bit, give you some background on our climate work and some of our current performance in the city, and then also some goal-setting practices and implications, and then give you an overview of what we're planning on doing with the C cap as of now, if you have any thoughts or suggestions there. And then we have some potential options you might wanna look at within setting goals, and I can speak to those in more detail later, but even within each of those options, there's some areas that I'll highlight that council may want to give us feedback on as we go through this. So, for some background, as many of you know, we signed on to the Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement back in 2007. We've been doing this work for quite a long time. We've done greenhouse gas inventories, and we had our Climate Energy Action Plan, the SEEP project that we've been working on since 2012. And since then, we've moved on and done municipal and community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventories, and within that realized that community-wide was really important, and so now we're embarking on our community-wide project here. This is just some of the policies and background for council, just to give you a snapshot in some of the areas. We already have some climate goals. So, you'll see one of these is promoting best practices for greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and there's several other things that are in the conference of plan that align well with our climate work that we're doing, and I'll also be speaking to the strategic plan that also talks about climate work as well. So, in our performance, you've seen this slide before. This shows where our current community-wide greenhouse gas emissions are. As you'll see, there's a lot of that that's happening at the buildings' level, so energy in buildings has quite a bit of our emissions at 55 percent. A lot of that coming from our commercial and institutional buildings, as well as all the buildings that our folks live in. And then a close second is transportation, and you'll also see that waste is 1 percent of this as well, and our local government operations is 2 percent of that. So, all the services we provide to the city. And that, this gives another snapshot of kind of showing where we show, that red sliver there is our municipal operations and what we're doing. Although that's only 2 percent, we also realize how important it is for the city to work on what we're doing and set a good example over time. And so this kinda shows in our actual operations, we've actually seen a 19 percent decrease from 2007 to 2014 in our emissions. A lot of that has come from actually the closed Wilders Grove landfill. The methane emissions over time decrease, and that has done a lot. We've also had quite a bit of energy efficiency, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a second. You saw this before, so that's the Climate Energy Action Plan. Within that, when we identified that energy use was our second-largest operating expense in the city, so there's a lot of motivation in a lot of ways for us to continue working on that. Within the Climate Energy Action Plan, we identified a lot of strategies, 100, and started working prioritizing those top 36 strategies, and a lot of them had to do with fuel use in the city fleet and our energy use, including natural gas and electricity in our buildings. Some of the other things that came out of SEEP included a fuel and fleet transformation plan that our engineering services department heads up, looking at a lot of ways that we can reach goals with our fleet. We track alternative fuel usage and greenhouse gases from our fleet in our strategic plan as well, and the city is also embarking in electric vehicle infrastructure study that is looking at the electrification of transportation, not only for our fleet, but our community moving forward as well. Renewable energy has also been a focus. We've looked at this for quite a bit, partnered with the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association on a renewable energy overview, and we have quite a few different renewable energy facilities in the city, so that's just a example of some of those. And this is a snapshot of our electricity usage. So, the city has over 1,000 different accounts in energy, or I'm sorry, in electricity, and we have industrial and small accounts, and you know, over time, a lot of those industrial accounts, such as our public utilities departments, their service areas are growing, and with that, we've seen some growth in the amount of electricity they're using. However, we also have a lot of other accounts, and we've been able to have a decrease of 20 percent in that electricity usage, and overall, we can show a 4 percent reduction in electricity usage in the city, and even in just the past few years, and that kinda goes back to that other slide where we were showing some of those energy efficiencies we were able to do over time. So, that's kind of a snap. Sorry, did you have a question?
Quick question. Yeah, do we know why such a spike in 2017?
I could have Billy speak to that a little bit more, but I think some of it had to do with service.
Some of the startups and new facilities, and actually, there was one facility that came online in February 28th, and actually, the climate, so we were switching these facilities, but it's mostly related to new services that are online.
Okay.
So, next, I wanted to speak just for just a few minutes about some goal-setting practices and implications as you're thinking about goal-setting with climate action work. So, this is just a snapshot. As we've worked on the Community Climate Action Plan research in the background, we looked at other best practices from across the country and around North Carolina, and as you can see, cities across the country are setting a lot of different kinds of goals. Some of them are focusing on per capita, some are focusing just on municipal operations, some are focusing on community-wide, so there's a lot of different things to consider with that. As you know, the governor actually also set a goal recently through Executive Order 80 in North Carolina for a 40 percent reduction by 2025, which also lines up nicely with an 80 percent reduction by 2050, which aligns with our climate mayor's protection that we have agreed to before. That's the goal that they kind of recommend with that. And then also, there's a lot of talk between aspirational versus strategic. So, as you're going forward, and I'll speak about this a little bit more and give you an example later in the presentation, but you know, there's a lot of science behind looking at what we need to do globally and also nationally versus looking at what strategies we can do, what works in our city, and kind of trying to do that. In our project, we're kind of looking at that like a quasi, we're kind of looking at both. We really wanna be aspirational, but also kind of also informed by strategy and looking what we can do in Raleigh and North Carolina as well. So, these are just some other considerations. You've heard some of these before in past presentations, but things to think about when you're thinking about greenhouse gas and renewable energy goals. As I mentioned, several cities have set goals, and they vary a lot in their target year versus community-wide versus municipal goals, the definitions of how they're defining energy and electricity, and then also within these, you know, cities have different opportunities and challenges versus how big they are, also especially utility service options available, viability of renewable energy, for instance, in North Carolina and actually in Raleigh, solar is viable, but something like wind is not so viable, or hydro aren't as big for us to be able to take part in on a large scale. Purchasing credits, I'll talk about more in a minute, and then different economic incentives, as well as, you know, environmental factors as well. When you're thinking of something like renewable energy, you really have to look at site feasibility and land availability, and then, you know, just considering if there's what significant financial, operational, and staff resources might be needed to consider as well. And then, as mentioned, you know, there are specific North Carolina regulations that differ here from other places as well. So, we do have some limited service options from the electric utility, but however, they are a big part of our project now and are really talking to us about what we can do together moving forward, so that's exciting. Now, these are some cost examples for you. These are probably not realistic when we're looking at our overall setting a goal. We wouldn't just look at one thing, we would look at several things for a strategy to reach that, but just to give you kind of an order of magnitude, this is just an example of that. So, for example, municipal today, as I just said, we'd have to look at how many acres we even had available, so we would be doing more than just this, but if you looked at municipal today, if you looked at our renewable electricity, to reach 100 percent renewable electricity, it would take 474 acres at $95 million in estimated cost for utility-scale solar, and that's about three-fifths the size of Central Park in New York. If you looked at community-wide today, it would be about 15,000 acres, which is about half the size of Hilton Head Island in South Carolina at 2.9 billion. And then if you looked at community-wide in 2050, you would need something like 25,000 acres of solar panels at 4.9 billion dollars, which would be about the size of Walt Disney World in Florida. So, that's just one example. Another might be carbon offset. So, I mentioned these before, so you've probably heard of people buying a carbon offset, for instance, if they take a flight somewhere to kind of offset the emissions that are coming out of that. Some cities are starting to use those as well, usually to meet a delta where they can't reach the rest of their goal. There's a lot of things to think about with that, and they can vary greatly with markets and demand, but this kind of gives you a snapshot to if we were gonna look at 100 percent of our greenhouse gas reduction for Raleigh, what those costs might be over time as well. Now, when you mention costs, as we move talking about our community-wide climate action plan, just wanted to mention benefits too. So, obviously, there's a lot of benefits in the community to us doing this project, co-benefits, looking at health, looking at quality of life, less cars on the road, and a lot of other things as well that are important that we all value. So, now I'm gonna give you a little bit more information about where we are right now in the Community Climate Action Plan, and then welcome your feedback as you look at potential options. So, here are some of the objectives for the project, and obviously, one of them we're really looking closely at is evaluating setting goals as we move forward, greenhouse gases, renewable energy, and any other strategy goals that can get us to where we wanna go. A lot of community education and outreach, we sent some information about some of the teams we're working with, and we're planning in the second phase of this project to do more community outreach and actually partner with a lot of the different departments that are already doing outreach to kind of give the lens of greenhouse gas and strategy kind of development with those projects as transportation and other groups are going out and working in the community as well. Looking at best practices for climate action planning, looking a lot of what other cities are doing. Emissions across the country are similar in that, you know, energy in buildings and transportation are two of the largest emissions, so we can learn from other cities even though we're different. And obviously, an important one is looking at vulnerable communities and using an equity framework and resiliency as well, and engaging with all those different folks in the community. So, here you can see our community-wide emissions. This shows that over time, we have been able to reduce our emissions by 2 percent, even though we've grown by 16 percent in that same time. So, that's a pretty good story to tell. However, our emissions are still going up, so it's important for us to think about how we can continue to do that. And as mentioned, there on the side, you know, knowing that our emissions are coming from our buildings, our transportation, our waste, these are things that everyone in the community is contributing to, so we kinda need to be able to talk to everybody about that and how we can all work together to reduce our emissions over time. So, this is a snapshot on where we are in the project now. We have been doing some meetings with the different teams, talking about what strategies might look like, what goals might look like, trying to kind of get some information and data together, share information about our greenhouse gas emissions, and we're at the point today where we're getting ready to look at Phase Two. So, as you know, on the agenda for this afternoon, you have an authorization for us to move forward with funding for the second phase of this project, where we're gonna be meeting more with those teams and looking at goal-setting and strategy development over time. If council wished to set a goal today, we would still be able to move forward with those teams and look more into the strategies, and I'll talk about that more in a minute as well. So, this is just a snapshot as an example, as business case as usual. So, if you forecasted our emissions over time, the blue is the buildings and energy use over time, the yellow is transportation, and as you know, the waste is a lot smaller in number, but you can see that little tiny green line at the bottom is our waste. If we continued at this rate, and you can see that dotted line down there as an example, you know, is an 80 percent reduction by 2050, that shows where our emissions would be going up, so we'd increase by 68 percent if we just continued as business as usual, making assumptions on population growth as we continue to grow. And if you look at this, this is just also an example. If you start to look at what potential strategies might look like, this one is an example of maybe some aggressive strategies as we look at. So, one of the biggest things that can happen, for example, if you look at that blue line there, is the greening of the grid, which isn't something that the city can directly control. As Duke Energy looks at where their sources of energy come from, that'll be an important place for us to have better greenhouse gas emissions here as we use electricity. And at that same time, if you look at that bottom kind of greenish seafoam green color, that is showing electrification of transportation over time. So, there's a lot of movement in that field where a lot of our, transportation's gonna move from fossil fuels to electrification, but at the same time as the grid is greening, that would give an opportunity for us to lower our emissions at the same time. So, as you'll see, that dotted line is still that 80 percent by 2050 number, so even as we look at what aggressive strategies might be over time, there's still gonna be that gap there that we have to figure out. But we are hopeful, you know, over time, not being able to predict the entire future and knowing technologies get better and a lot of things change over time, hoping to figure out ways where we can fill that gap as well. So, that's just kind of a, these are kind of some of the discussions we're having with the teams on what this looks like over time. So, goal-setting options for council. I laid them out kind of in a little bit more detail, and then I have one more slide so you can see them both together. As you know, you updated the strategic plan on May 7th, so that allows staff to go forward with the Community Climate Action Plan, look at goal-setting along the way, evaluating renewable energy and greenhouse gas goals as part of the project. So, you're welcome to let us go ahead and do that through the project, and within that, you can also maybe provide guidance, as we mentioned before, for things such as aspirational versus informed by strategy, community-wide, do you wanna, just a community-wide goal, do you want some municipal goals and community-wide goals, some other areas where you might wanna give us some feedback there. And then, option two, you could also consider setting a goal now, in addition to or in lieu of your recent action of adding that to the plan. So, within that, you could let us, you could say that you wanted to set a goal today, we could take that goal and then with our teams, focus on strategies moving forward, or you could recommend a goal and then let us go through the process still, and we could bring back both and compare them in the end as well too, if you wanted to. So, those are just some suggestions, but council's open to do whatever you want, or I can answer some questions as well if you'd like.
Okay.
I know that was a lot of information quickly.
Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, first of all, for all of this information and for all the work you've been doing, the city's been doing for multiple years on this issue. One of the things I'm still not clear on is, per the timeline of where C cap is at, it looks like a goal should have been set back in February, and so I'm wondering, having gotten a bunch of information from our stakeholders and from our community partners on where they're at and what they're comfortable with, at what point will you take that information, digest it as staff, and start thinking about a goal?
So, we had planned on continuing to go through, right now, we've really kind of given them some general information about what goal-setting is, how goal-setting is connected to resources, and how goal-setting is connected to what strategies might look like. We've gathered information from them on what strategies they might think that we wanna do, and we were thinking that we'd probably have a goal, honestly, probably in early 2020 finalized with potential strategies at the same time, kind of, as we said, kind of looking at both together, how we inform our goal-setting with the strategy development. However, if council has some, a different view on that, we can kind of look at that a little bit of a different way, but that was our plan as of now, is to kind of do those things together and present the strategy ideas along with a goal around the early 2020.
And that feels different than what most communities are doing, where most communities are setting a goal and then figuring out how they're gonna get there. Can you talk to me about why we're looking at it that way?
You know, it's interesting, and I talk to my peers a lot, we started planning for this earlier on and I think got further where I think some other, from, and this is probably a simplified version, not right in every city, but there were some probably leadership decisions from a council perspective where they brought this up and the staff maybe didn't have a process going on already at that point, and so then they were kind of responding to and then planning after the fact. So, we had kind of already started this process beforehand. That's kind of a very simple way, I guess, you could look at it, is we've been working on this for a little while. So, but either way, it would be okay if you would like to look at us kind of figuring out goal-setting a different way with your feedback earlier on, but we had started this process already before, I think, we brought it up, potential goal-setting at the council level.
Okay.
Yeah, if that makes sense.
I think there's been a lot of work done pre-council setting any kind of goal.
Yeah, we kind of planned on this and, you know, for a while, on going through this process to do a community-wide goal. So, we definitely have goals and things that we've been working on municipally, but for the community-wide goal, we had started planning as staff quite a while ago for that.
Okay. Council Mindell?
Yeah, we recently asked staff to take a look at what it would, what we need to do to have the G I L I D actions be not voluntary but mandatory. Would that, what kind of an impact, if any, would that have on goal-setting and some of these issues?
So, that would be one thing that's very supportive of climate work in general, so really important to the work we do, and as we mentioned, there's so many different things that go into the greenhouse gas emissions over time, and so all those kind of strategies we're looking at, what the city already had, leverage points that the city already has. For instance, the Wake County Transit Plan is a huge investment that the city and the county and a lot of folks are already making, that we can leverage, and we know moving forward in transportation is gonna make a big difference, not only with municipal, but also community-wide emissions. So, all of those little things add up for our emissions for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Council Cox?
Yes, I noticed on one of the slides, C cap forecasting goals, it says aggressive, and it talks about fleet shift to EV. And I was, I know that it appears that Raleigh is a member of climate mayors?
Yes.
Okay. And they have a collaborative for purchasing electric vehicles, but it doesn't appear that we're really pursuing that, because a number of cities have already made commitments for purchasing electric vehicles. I was wondering where we're at on that and what would our goal look like?
So, we are actually this week having some implementation planning with our staff. A lot of those folks are right here in the room this week, talking about what that looks like, and we are definitely talking about those opportunities and trying to get ready. There's the VW settlement money. Duke Energy also has some information into the Utilities Commission about EV pilot project programs that we're paying attention to as well, and we just see more and more of those opportunities coming down the pipeline that we're trying to plan ahead for, and most definitely, as we look at our Community Climate Action Plan and strategies, electrification of transportation will be definitely in there as part of it.
When will we be able to get maybe a report with some details about that?
Sure, about electrification and what the city's thinking, definitely.
And Councilman Cox, I do know that, I know even when I was on the Transit Authority, there was a conversation about that conversion, but they had, we had already, it was ED for buses was still kind of new, and we were moving towards compressed natural gas. So, that was, it was kind of moved there first, knowing that Greensboro, I think, has ordered some buses with some assistance from Duke Energy. See how that model works on how it scales, 'cause their system is somewhat smaller than ours, but I do know the Transit Authority, and I think staff will probably bring some more information of where they are now as far as that, but I know there's conversation definitely on moving towards electric buses in our system.
Yeah, I would just be interested in understanding what they've looked into and what the details are and where we're going.
Yeah, and also, I think, not just providing the information on the buses, but also the infrastructure that takes place in order to support those buses would be good as part of that information.
Okay.
Councilman?
Thanks for all this work. Huge issue, hard to wrap your arms around. Slide 19, you talk about the costs of purchasing carbon offsets. Slide 19. Anyway, the question I had there is, when we're talking about, right, are those annual numbers or are those cumulative numbers for the 2050?
So, I won't pretend to be an expert. We actually got our consultants to help us with this, so I can get more information with, for you about this. We used kind of today's numbers, and this market is getting established and quite new, but it is a market, and so numbers will change over time, so there would be a lot of variability. And one thing to mention with buying carbon offsets, it's, you're investing in that, and you'd have to invest in it every year to offset your emissions, and then that money wouldn't be going into a local kind of program or project such as the Inerobic Digest, or for instance, that would, you know, lower emissions over time too. So, there's kind of a lot of things we'd have to consider with carbon offsets.
But, just sticking with the community today in 2050, the community today, that is the delta from the goal we've set for ourselves today, but is that a number we'd have to meet every year?
Yeah, on our mission. So, that, thank you, sorry to clarify. So, community today is looking at our most recent greenhouse gas inventory data and information that we have, and the emissions from that point, using that number from today. But yes, every year that we had emissions, we would have to pay that amount.
So, then projecting to the community 2050, that, somewhere between 18 and 55 million, that is still the delta from where we are now to a much better, much greater reduction of greenhouse gases. of greenhouse gases. So, conceivably by, by the time we got to 2050, we, we could be improving our performance and that
Yes.
Carbon offset purchase would be a smaller number.
Yes, over time, we would hope, we'd hope so. So right now, those projections are very early on and, and just looking at, and again, the market over time would most likely change if and when this was a strategy that cities went after.
Right. And, and so it sort of takes me back to the conversation you were having about new transit system coming on, because that would be, obviously, we're saying that transportation is 42% community-wide of our greenhouse gas sources and that transit then would help.
Yes.
These numbers would decline over time as the transit system grew and we traded electric vehicles for fossil fuel vehicles.
And, and we have had conversations and with staff, even I think back in when the community climate, sorry, the, the first action plan was, was being formed, that we would try to, try to find ways to invest the money locally first before going after something like this. And, you know, with anything we do, we'd want to look at energy efficiency first and a wide variety of strategies to reduce our emissions. And I think this, there are some cities that have started to do this, but they're usually, just like that example that showed that delta gap, some of those cities have, have purchased carbon offsets to, to fill that gap over time, but, but not all of their emissions. This, this would show, this shows a hundred percent, but that wouldn't realistically be the approach we would take.
Well, I guess the, the point to me of this slide is to say, you can buy carbon offsets which don't really improve your performance.
Yes.
Or you can take that same money and actually invest it in infrastructure improvements that actually do increase your performance so that the offset amount would, would, so.
Yes.
The point is to say, these are big numbers that we could put into transit or we could put into energy retrofits or we could put into assisting higher energy performance in new buildings, whatever it is. But it, obviously, it all comes down to our community's commitment to meeting these goals.
Yes.
Okay. So I think today, the question is given, for us to give direction on options one, and I'm summarizing these. Option one, allow staff to continue the approach that they're taking and, and follow their current approach. And option two is basically, we say what we want the goal to be and then they go figure out how to get there. Is that a high-level summary of the two options?
And then within there, you know, if there's any other things that you, you would like to kind of give direction on?
Okay. I do have one question and it goes with the growth of our city and planning. Is, could there be a component that as projects come before us, that they are evaluating on how they impact our green gases, green gas emissions?
Yeah, we could, we definitely talk, we have their interdepartmental team, so that's something we can discuss with them and, and look at how we do that. And I guess we'd have to come back with more information on what that might look like.
That's a worthy goal. Will you give us a little bit of?
To see how the relationship?
Especially since we see population growth that affects the climate or our, our get greenhouse emissions. So it would be nice to know those.
And I will say, you know, some, the Public Utilities Department, for instance, has already tried to do that with the Inurbic Digestor and, and connected those things. And we do have some, like I mentioned, in the strategic plan that are looking at our greenhouse gas emissions related to our fuel, fuel and fleet plan as well. So, that's something we can look at, for sure.
To that point, I've also heard, one of the very small but critiques of Governor Cooper's plan is that it doesn't look at land use planning and its relationship to transportation. And I'm not seeing that as well in our aggressive illustrative portfolio. And so just want to flag that, that's.
I love that you brought that up. We're actually thinking about, as we try to bucket all this big information for people, our buckets are kind of looking like potentially energy in buildings, which will then have a lot of different things within them, renewables, energy efficiency, a lot of things. And then transportation and land use as kind of one other bucket, because within that, those things, two things are so closely tied. And I know we're having a community outreach meeting soon that, you know, we'll participate in as well about, you know, the BRT and, and all of those different things that we're doing as well. So, yes, planning has, has been a great partner to talk to and we've been doing some brainstorming about what potential strategies might look like connecting those things for sure.
Okay. So, it's council. I think from what I'm hearing, option one sounds reasonable to me, but I'm open to council this. Or if you all feel you need more time, I didn't feedback.
I agree with you. Option one is what I would prefer.
I'd actually push back and say that given what a serious issue climate change is for our entire country and how we're seeing the feds drop the ball, we're seeing the state has delayed action for so long until Governor Cooper's executive order last year, I think it's on us to go ahead and set something pretty aspirational. And I like what I'm seeing already in terms of what staff is doing with strategy and goals and for us to go ahead and make the statement that we want to see an 80% reduction by 2050 is what I would like to propose.
Okay, and then staff figure out how to get us there?
Yep.
Well, okay, and so, how do you feel about 80% by 2050?
I, I, as we mentioned, that is in line with the North Carolina goal that was set and, and a standard that we have definitely been talking about quite a bit, along many others as well with the teams.
Okay. So I've heard ideas, but I haven't heard any motions.
All right, let's hear it.
Yeah, I'd move that we adopt a goal as city council of reducing our climate change emissions by 80% by 2050.
I assume you've moved in properly second. That was set the goal of 80% by 2050. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. Motion carries.
Aye.
One no? Okay. All right, so it'd be six, one. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Second item on your agenda is another departmental update from city planning. As you may recall, last year, we talked about having additional updates provided by city planning and development services to keep the council informed about the various projects and initiatives that are going forward. So, this is another one of those periodic updates. There's no action, there's no specific requirements associated with this. This is really information sharing and any concerns or feedback you may have, this is your opportunity. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ken Powers.
Pesky little thing, doesn't want to open. There we go. Good afternoon. Give you a quick rundown and update on what's been going on. The planning department, sort of starting with some updates on our business plan, how it relates to the city's strategic plan, and then go through some of the key, highlights of key projects. We have about 45 active things in the hopper, so I can't go through all of them, but we're going to try to hit some of the big ones. So, the strategic plan sets the overall goals for the city and we attempted in our business plan to piggyback on and reflect wherever possible those specific goals, which is part of the format. Every initiative that's in our business plan has to link back in some way to a goal or initiative contained within the strategic plan. And we have 17 objectives and 54 initiatives in our business plan and we track 27 performance measures in order to measure our progress on those. So, I'm going to go through a subset of those for which there's some progress to report since we last talked. Objective one, which is about aligning facilities, staff and technology with our organizational needs, very similar to a initiative in the citywide strategic plan. Pleased to announce the hiring of our new business manager position, which was saying that it's created in last year's budget. And Ms. Letitia Holmes is in the audience today and took the lead on the preparation of the presentation you're seeing. Next, we've done substantial work on our goal of really making the department a national leader on civic engagement and public participation. So, the public engagement RFQ is out and the selection process is in an advanced state. We are looking for this study to really advance our practices forward. With these sort of five major goals in mind, we want to make sure that people who are interested can know about the engagement that we're doing that is accessible and accommodating, that all members of our diverse population are welcome and feel welcome, that our venues provide for meaningful participation, that all of our public processes needs to be authentic, meaning that the participation makes a difference in the outcome, that people's voices are heard and they influence what's in the reports and plans, and that it's accountable, that people who participated get a report back, they know how their input influenced the outcome. The scope for our RFQ is to research the best practices, survey resident engagement preferences, assess our current practices against those best practices, create a playbook that would have templates for how we do engagement for different types of studies, and then follow on that with some additional staff training. Where we are is that the, this, this went out in March 26th and closed in April. The selection committee is anticipated to deliver their recommendation for the preferred consultant team this week, and we are looking to get the contract executed with them by the end of the fiscal year. Not waiting for that, we have also sent six of our key staff people through the IAP2 training, International Association for Public Participation, is what that stands for. And we brought them to town and did three days of total training for six staff people and found it extremely useful undertaking. We also have enhanced our reporting to the council and, or reporting to the public, both through our quarterly project reports to the council, enhancements to the city's website. And just last week, we concluded with a large number of our staff, two days of project management training. We had a gentleman who specializes, he actually wrote the book on project management for planners. The name of the book is Project Management for Planners. And it's like, it's the canonical text of project management for people in the planning profession. And we brought him here for a couple of days of training. I sat in on some of that. I thought it was great material and very well received and really has helped us get organized around project management. Going from there, those are department-wide initiatives to some of our divisional initiatives. Our Conference of Planning, you know, is a priority council for staff to be available to citizens. We've been very active out in the CACs. We've also been continuing our, our drop-in sessions before the evening council hearings, ask a planner. We'll be frank, there, we typically get like just a couple of drop-ins per session, but in terms of the, the, it's been very well received by the community that they know that planners are available for them to just come in and, and talk and ask questions. So it's a, the appreciation and enthusiasm for the program has made it worthwhile, even if the actual attendance added is not that large. We also are looking, now that we're in the adoption and review process with the Planning Commission and Council for the five-year Conference of Plan Update, to enhance our processes for keeping the plan up to date and to get back into regular progress reporting. So, the progress report is really how we've held, staff has held ourselves accountable as an organization for following up on all the multitudinous action items that are in the plan while we are working on the update that sort of lapsed a bit. And we're looking to get that back and put it onto a regular schedule. Annexation ETJ remains a hot topic and it's as particularly a hot topic as Wake County updates their land use plan. We recently presented on this topic to you at work session, which I thought went well and, and helped frame some of the issues. And we're continuing to work on updating our annexation agreements with other communities in Wake County. I think Wake County is somewhat unique in having had this longstanding practice of making sure that the local governments are not bickering over who annexes what and working all this out in advance in accordance with an overall plan for the growth of the county. Preservation, as we've expanded the footprint of historic districts in the city, has been extremely busy processing hundreds of COA applications and we have been 100% on our benchmarks for that. Real Estate Division, with all the capital project planning, has also been very busy. You've certainly seen that reflected on your agenda. In spite of the fact that many times we have come to you with related for easements and other things, condemnation requests, actually 94% of all of our easement acquisitions have been settled without having to resort to condemnation. We also, in implementing the downtown real estate study, have been, received the authorization to council to move ahead with the sale of some surplus properties. These properties have proved quite valuable and we've generated over 1.1 million dollars in sale proceeds to go into the Affordable Housing Fund and a low under $100,000 for other capital projects. And our Urban Design Center has been leading the charge on improving how we regulate the development of sloping sites. And I'm going to give a little bit of update on this, but we have, moving into the very final stages of the, looking at commercial and larger scale sites and are starting to focus on the infill residential aspect of it. And then, lastly, looking at zoning enforcement and administration, as we have increased our staffing capacity with recent positions created by the council through the budget, we have started to work through some of our backlog of zoning issues and make sure we're being more responsive and can devote more resources towards coordination with the staff in current planning and development services. So, moving from there into initiatives, we have a total of 41 things that are, we're tracking in the, in the first quarter of this calendar year. 15 ongoing programs, 12 planning studies, five preservation studies, four annexation projects, four urban design-related studies and one real estate study. And adding to that, active and pending council follow-up requests, of which there are four, there's a total of 45 active and ongoing projects in the department right now. So, we have a few that are entering the next phase. This is a photo of the Avon Ferry area, which is a study that has been completed and just, we wanted to talk about the Hillside Commercial Development Study. We have spent April and May on some additional engagement. We used the Development Services Advisory Committee as a sounding board for the development community to get some of their concerns out on the table. We've also held another public presentation of the draft recommendations and have it out for a public review period right now. That is going to end, end in June, and we should be able to bring the policy recommendations back to council shortly thereafter. The Preservation Toolkit, which is a thing that was presented to you for a while ago, has, you know, received, you've received the report from the Historic Development Commission. And then the next thing is we're studying one of the recommendations, which is the establishment of a preservation fund. Ongoing things, Midtown at Almond's, we had a large, or a lengthy public meeting yesterday, a large public meeting back a week ago Saturday, and some additional pop-ups and meetings are going on as we're sort of in the middle phase of this study. I think some exciting recommendations are starting to gel and come out of this that involve neighborhood traffic calming and green streets, multimodal transportation improvements, potentially a new crossing of the, the 440 belt line to provide alternative routes into the growing midtown area. And so, we have an online survey that's open until later this month. And based on the input, we plan to firm up some of those recommendations and go back into the public this fall. Similarly, Capitol Boulevard North is also in a similar phase of its development. We had three public meetings in April. We're continuing to do pop-ups. Our public survey closed just a few days ago on May 18th. And now, based on the feedback, once we get the chance to analyze that, we're going to be developing a preferred scenario with the consultant team for Capitol Boulevard and taking that out to the public for review and comment in the fall. Couple of things that are just starting up, especially on the public side, is the Western Boulevard corridor study and our southeast special, southeast special study area study. So, the Western Boulevard study is really being driven by the bus rapid transit planning. It was the one corridor that had been identified in the Wake County Transit Plan that had not been the subject of a corridor study. We'd done Southern Gateway, we'd done New Bern, we'd done Capitol Boulevard inside the belt line. We had not looked at Western Boulevard, but it's an important corridor, providing that route from downtown through NC State, Pullen Park, Dix Park, then out to West Raleigh and then to Cary. And right now, there's three potential alternatives for how bus rapid transit gets from the Jones Franklin area to Cary. We don't have a locally preferred alternative. This will produce that. So, this is a pending scope approval by council, but we intend moving quickly once we have that. And the Southeast Area Study is something that we've been working on internally, just in terms of internal due diligence, but the public process for this. And this is looking actually outside of our current planning jurisdiction to the areas, the future annexation areas that we currently do have land use guidance for in our comprehensive plan, but we do not currently zone. So this is sort of the first time we've really done a public process outside of the city's jurisdiction, but it's areas that, as they're currently planned, do at some point in the future come into the city's jurisdiction and city limits. Is to start in June, doing some listening sessions and pop-ups. This is a different type of environment. A lot of the land out here is still rural. There are still a lot of large tracts. We want to meet with some of those big landowners. But what we're trying to do is, is look at a growth framework jointly with the citizens there and with the county that's beyond just low-density zoning. You know, what is the, where is it appropriate to maybe consider some nodes in this area to provide goods and services to the population's growth that we know will eventually come to this part of the county?
Question.
Yeah.
What would it take to move it into our ETJ?
So, there is a process established by the county for requesting ETJ extension So there is a process established by the county for requesting ETJ extensions. It's a sort of an application process, the council would have to approve that. Staff would obviously prepare the application and the background materials. It would go to the county and the county commissioners would have to approve it based on, and they would get a staff report from their own county planning staff. They look at things such as growth trends within the area that we're requesting, our progress annexing within the ETJ. Some of this, now, this framework predates the changes in annexation law. So some of the progress in annexing within the ETJ is beyond the city's control since it's petition-based. But they still, it's still technically part of the criteria that the county examines. But if there was a desire to get out in front of some of the development and zoning decisions, that would be something that the city could request and the county could consider. Other communities in Wake County are making ETJ requests, we have not made one in recent memory. A thing that's starting up with the big kickoff on June 6th is the study that formerly known as the BRT Framework, now called Equitable Development Around Transit, because we wanted to give it a title about what it was really about. And we have been doing a major push on public outreach, trying to get broad involvement. This is a system-level look, not just a single corridor, but what is, what are the city's goals for growth and development and affordable housing on this Bus Rapid Transit system? And the idea is that if we can set some general targets for this, it'll help inform, you know, if we can set the targets at sort of a 20,000-foot view, when we zoom down to more station area planning and corridor-specific planning, we'll have something that we're shooting for in terms of making trade-offs about which stations are more appropriate for growth and what is a reasonable target to look for in terms of how much of our growth, you know. As Councilman Stevenson has pointed out many times, our current comp plan has this framework of centers and corridors and says we want two-thirds of our growth to land on those centers and corridors. This is kind of asking a similar question, but for the BRT corridor specifically.
So Ken, this is for all the four of the BRT corridors?
Yeah, it is. And so what we're trying to do is get this out a little bit in front of both Western Boulevard and New Bern, you know, Western Boulevard Corridor Study and New Bern Avenue Project Development so some of the results of this broader public outreach can inform some of the more specific decisions that will be made there. And then I want to, before closing, just two major things that are on the horizon, both of which are the subject of budget notes that are part of the budget process. On the left is a map of the edges of Dix Park and on the right is the Old East Raleigh area plan that's currently in the comp plan, but is kind of out of date with current market conditions and development trends. So Dix Park Edge is major, major undertaking. We know that the investment in a destination park here is going to have an impact on the surroundings. And the edges are very varied. We have, you know, in Fuller Heights, a neighborhood with a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing. We have a historic district in Boylan Heights. We've got a very large tract of undeveloped land owned by the North Carolina State University. A lot of variety of conditions within this. We have other neighborhoods that are nearby and likely in that sphere of influence. And the goal here is to set, you know, a framework for the future development that is equitable, that preserves that affordability, so we're not just letting it slip away through market forces, but also sets an affirmative development vision that's based on the idea that this is a major public investment that a lot of people are going to want to live and work near. And what is their, what is our opportunity to accommodate that demand while preserving affordability? So this is probably one of the more complex planning things we've ever taken on. Obviously, the kickoff is dependent on the result of the budget process, but we anticipate this is coming. Old East Raleigh is somewhat smaller scale study, but no less important. This is an area of rapid change with a lot of real estate pressure. When the study was done, the area plan we have now is going on 15 years in age. The market pressures on this neighborhood were far less and we are much more concerned about revitalization and how to spark it. Now we're much more concerned about managing the change and mitigating the adverse impacts of that real estate pressure while capturing some benefits for the residents. And so there's some key development sites that need to be looked at as part of that. So that is the conclusion of my update and I would be happy to answer any further questions.
Any questions?
You're going to be very busy.
Yes, we are. Fortunately, we're very close to fully staffed, but even so, we're going to, we're going to be quite busy.
Thank you for the update.
Definitely, thank you for the updating the information. If there are no questions, we are adjourned.